Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second Roaring Fork Weekly Journal Candidates Forum. Glad everybody can join us. Thanks especially to Grassroots for sponsoring, helping us to sponsor this event tonight. And it is not being livestreamed, but it will be available on the Grassroots Network ASAP. So, check that out. I'm Madeline Osberger. I'm the editor of the Roaring Fork Weekly Journal. And with me is our correspondent, Todd Hartley. And also in the audience is Steve Aldridge. And Jane Bachrock is taking photos tonight, recording the event for posterity. So, with that, Todd is going to do the introductions, and good luck, candidates.
Thank you, Madeline. Thank you guys so much for being here, and thank you all for running. I am a citizen of Basalt, so this is going to be very informative for me as well, and I'm looking forward to it. But let's start with like introductions here. We'll start down the far end there. David, recently, an influencer of some sort was caught trying to pretend she was in Bali when she was at an Ikea. Where would you like us to believe you are?
Between an Ikea and a what?
She was pretending she was in Bali, but she was just taking photos of herself in an Ikea. So where are you right now? Where are we supposed to believe you are?
Oh, where are you supposed to believe I am? Well, I'm in lovely Richardson, Texas. I apologize for not being able to be there live. You know, I would have loved to have been there and met everybody. Fortunately, I'll be there next week, March 2nd, but I had a prior work commitment here in Richardson. So yeah, it's Richardson, Texas.
That sounds awesome. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to run.
Well, we, our family, we moved into Basalt and bought our house in 2017, so we're new to the area by any stretch. And, you know, but we were settled down here. We have roots here. We're going to be here a long time. We want to get back to the community. In particular, doing town council will be something that I would be, you know, extremely grateful to have the opportunity to do. You know, I love the process of politics. I've always kind of dreamed of getting involved with it. I believe that, you know, local government, municipal government is probably the most important place you can do that right now. We've got a lot of issues in Basalt that, you know, need council's guidance, need to listen to the community, need to get all that coming together, and I want to take part in that. That's really the fundamental reason I want to run.
Well, thank you. All right. Glenn, you list in your bio that you have two dogs named Rosemary and Time.
Yep.
Do you care to explain what happened to Parsley and Sage?
I wouldn't let my wife name one of them Sage.
Ex-girlfriend? What do we?
Nah, just didn't want them.
Okay. Anyway, all right, so tell us why you want to run.
So, I moved to Colorado in 2004. We lived in parachute rifle. Eventually made our way to Snowmass Village, lived up there for six years. Made our way to Basalt in 2010. Managed to get a house and buy one in 2012, or at least a condo. My mom's always been involved in politics throughout my entire life. She ran for city council in Sheridan, Wyoming, mayor of Sheridan, Wyoming, state representative of Wyoming. Helped get involved with that. It's always been something I've been very interested in. And she taught me that everybody can have a point of view, and listening to those points of view is probably the most important thing. And I think that's what we all got to focus on, is working together to accomplish what we need to get done.
All right. Tiffany?
Todd.
So you lead, you, on your bio, you lead yoga retreats.
I do.
Do you think retreating is always a good policy? Don't we need leadership here in Basalt?
We do need leadership, but I think taking a step back and connecting is really important, especially from the day-to-day. I know that businesses and organizations are doing that a lot more. A more mindfulness-based practice is bringing in that retreat aspect so that you can connect just on a deeper level. And that's why I'm running, is to connect to the community on a deeper level so that we can bridge some gaps between old town, new town being Willets, and just different areas of possibility. So, I think connection is one of the main reasons I'm running.
Excellent. All right. Elise? Now, in your bio, you said that it was your dream to make pastry. Is that going to interfere? Like, if some great pastry gig comes up in the middle of your term, are you going to, what's going to come first, Basalt or eclairs?
Well, I don't really see that there's a conflict of interest there, Todd. You know, whatever leftover scraps happen to come out of the dessert will come to council meetings, so. I mean, is that a bad thing?
All right, so tell us why you're running.
I'm running because I participated in the Basalt master planning process, in the engagement and outreach aspects of it. And there was so much interesting feedback received, and I felt like, wow, you know, I didn't realize the community felt this way. And I'm not sure that the current council realizes this either. So when the opportunity arose to represent people and take everything that I'd heard through that process into consideration, I thought, this is my chance.
All right. Jennifer, you wear a lot of hats with the Basalt Town Council.
Well, fashion.
That's full stop right there.
I do appreciate fashion, and maybe the community thrift store is the best way to describe where I get all my hats. So, I do really adore and honor serving our community. All the various different boards I'm on and other elective positions. We live in such an incredible place, and now is the time to be thinking about our future. And that's what I would really strive to focus on in the next four years. Looking towards what we can do for improving our governance organization. We've really worked on that in the last four years. And now that foundation is solid, we can collaborate with our regional partners and bridge and really strengthen that fabric. So, we are blessed to be in both Eagle and Pittkin Counties. Eagle County is evolving with new staff, and I look forward to continuing a partnership and really speaking up for what Basalt and the Mid Valley can be in the future.
Okay. Dieter, now, if I remember correctly, in the 90s, you hosted a German dance show called Sprockets.
Yes.
Yes. What have you been doing since then?
Thanks for stopping there. What have I been doing since then while I moved to Colorado? I would say six years, well, I did move to Colorado six years ago with my wife and family, and, you know, fell in love with the place, wanted to plant roots, have planted roots. And I see this as an opportunity to invest more in a community. It's just in my nature to give what I can, and, you know, I vote too. And I'm excited to hear what the fellow candidates have to say. And, you know, I have a stake in the game. I'd like to hope that, you know, I can represent what people around town are telling me.
Great. All right, let's get to our questions here. So, one thing that people want to know is, what is sort of nearest and dearest to your heart? If you were to get elected, what would be sort of your pet project right out of the gate? Tiffany's making notes. We're going to start with her interrupter stream with thought.
Can we do like Elizabeth and Bernie? And put our hands up.
Are you that, okay, all right, Jen. No, no, all right, if you're that eager.
Oh, is this kind of a?
Sure, okay. Tiffany?
Well, I, for me, what's nearest and dearest to my heart are my kids. And so, their future is the most important for me, living here in this valley. And I think the top two things, if there was a pet project, I would say more recreation for them, and I mean, a center. We're the only town in this valley that doesn't have a rec center. And I would like to see that come into fruition one day. For the, if not for them, but for others, other children as well. Because I know that for parents, it would be a huge help.
Okay. Jen?
Yes. What is near and dear to my heart is really having a clear understanding of what this valley geographically can carry. What can our roads carry? What can Rafta carry? What can electricity, gas, the, everything, our emergency services? And so, having a carrying capacity study, I feel, would be such a valuable investment. We have successful versions of it with the Roaring Fork Housing Coalition Study that was done. That told us where people are living, where they're commuting to, how they're commuting there, and how their money is being spent. And that is influencing all of the entire Roaring Fork Valley and along the I-70 corridors, housing planning for the future. Now imagine if we did that for childcare, and if we did, and Rafta has done this, the usage study, but there's so many other aspects that we can tie into it. And that is really what I would like to see accomplished in the next four years.
Great. Elise?
I'm going to piggyback on my earlier statement, why I wanted to run, and the desire to see the community represented. And I think if I was going to say I had a pet project, it would be to expand all of the avenues of communication that we currently have with the community. I feel like, and I think Bill Kane touched on this at the mayoral forum, that simply having, you know, a comment period at a council meeting on a Tuesday night at 6:00 PM when it's dinnertime, and you're trying to get your kids to bed, and all that kind of good stuff, is, it's just not inclusive enough. So, with all of the online avenues right now, I think that there's definitely opportunity there for us to be able to communicate better with the community, even if it's as simple as just taking a quick, like, online poll where you're on the bus and you say, you know, here's the council issue, yes, I agree, no, I don't agree. I mean, just something as simple as that would improve our outreach, I think.
All right. Dieter?
I'd say near and dear to my heart is probably early childhood care and development, mostly because when we moved to the valley, it's something we kind of struggled with to align, and could have made or break kind of our move in the sustainability of that. So I would say, I would say that, for me, is near and dear to my heart. I think that, you know, as far as I understand, it's a valley-wide problem. And there's been a lot of information, a lot of study, and a lot of discussion around it. While I would obviously like to see that continue, I also think that there's got to be something out there that we can pull in right now, hopefully, and maybe move towards the end as opposed to waiting for that silver bullet that's going to resolve an issue that's kind of affects more than just our community.
Glenn?
So I would say what's near and dear to my heart is community. We've all got to realize, whether we're in old town Basalt, whether we're in Willets, we're a community. And for some reason, it seems like we have gotten to the point where Willets is Willets and Basalt's Basalt, or Old Town is Old Town. We're all one. We all got to work together. A pet project, I would say in-town commuter. Get something that we can have that circulates certain times a day, that gets people to the park and rides, so that we're taking traffic off the highway. We're helping mitigate the problem that we already have. But we got to do it as a community. And that's the most important thing we've all got to realize, is we got to work together to get this done.
All right. And David, how about you?
Yeah, so, nearest and dearest to my heart and kind of the pet project, I was a music major prior to doing the technology thing, and I saw I'm a drummer. I love music, I love the arts, I'd love to see what more we can do to champion that in our community, because it's just an enriching thing for everybody to participate in or to observe in whatever fashion. I think infrastructure, I know it sounds kind of boring, but I mean, look, right now, you know, being able to be with you guys and make this connection with technology and broadband, I think, is something that's important as well. And then, you know, a lot of people touched on it as well, but growth and managing growth in a way that we're, you know, our communities, our family, our environment is so critical. And I feel like we need to manage growth in a way that we recognize our constraints, but recognize that we do have some, you know, organic growth in our community. And all of that together, I mean, those are kind of the near and dear things that I think about.
Great. All right, so, our next question is about how you see town council's role. And the way we're going to frame it is, one of the things that the town council did last year was to declare a climate emergency. Now, do you see the town council's role as should we be dictating what people, you know, practices and things like that in the name of the climate emergency? Or should we be more laissez-faire? What kind of town council do you see? Dieter, do you see it as being a very active town council, or one that sort of lays back a little bit?
Well, I think it has to be a listening town council, one that does its due diligence with regards to what the people would like, and you move forward off of that. That would be the kind of town council I would hope to participate in.
Yeah. Okay. David, did that question make any sense?
It makes perfect sense, thanks. Yeah, so, town council's role, it really comes down to the wishes of the people. You know, there's two fundamental elements in my mind, decision-making and oversight, right? We want to be making decisions as a council that reflect the will of the people. It's that simple, right? And oversight, making sure that what's happening in our town and what we're executing upon is in the interests of the people of Basalt. That's the role I see for council.
Okay. Glenn?
So the role I see for council is, one thing we got to remember is, we all elected the current town council. We all voiced that this is who we want to represent us. And I think that they did a pretty good job. And that's what our role is. We get elected, and we run on platform, and we're there to do what these people want. And it's easy to step back four years later and go, they did a bad job, but on the same token, we elected them. We put them there. And that's the most important thing, is do what you say you're going to do.
Okay. Elise?
I think we're pretty much all on the same page, it sounds like, in terms of representing folks. So, I'm just reiterate that, and then move on to the secondary question about the climate emergency. I have six years in government sustainability, and I have tried everything from incentives to regulations across the board. And what really frustrated me and made me take a step back from it was, I don't want people to feel forced to do something, they should want to do it. So, from that perspective, with the climate emergency being stated, I would look for the opportunities to do the things that folks are on board with and they want to do.
Okay. Jen?
Sure. So, the two parts are listening, and the current council, which I am part of, if any of you haven't put together, I am the incumbent, who is running for another four years. And what we did here during the master plan outreach, there was a lot of feedback from the public stating that climate leadership is a priority. So, it's not necessarily something that us seven people sitting at the table just like this came, you know, baked up and came up with of, that it does, we do make choices and we do find information from the public. And that is reflected to us that the public is really concerned about the climate. And so, what we are doing, and what we have done, is updated our building codes to meet the current international building codes, which do call for more green building practices. And these are not made up, these are utilized in our other neighboring municipalities. So, we can take the task of being a model for other small towns, and that's what our constituency is currently supporting for us to do.
Tiffany?
So, to address the first part of the question about whether or not council should be involved with not forcing people to, you know, take action, I think that you can lead by example. And whether that's you recycle or compost, or what you're doing for the environment teaches your community better practices. And so, not necessarily that you have to force someone to do something a certain way, but I think active participation within the community and engaging with the community around the climate crisis, because it is, is important. And like Elise was saying just a moment ago, it's going to take more than just every other Tuesday night. It's going to take engagement all around, whether that's showing up at a, you know, a drive, or, you know, collecting leaves when we do in the fall here, or, you know, school drives and things like that. So, it's going to be, I think it's active participation from council.
Okay. All right. This is for the newcomers. Well, we have a question for you coming up in just a sec, Jen. This is for you newcomers. I've been asked to ask you if you're familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, and maybe touch on the experience you have in those sort of, in governmental-type sessions or council sessions, things like that. Elise, why don't you start?
I have no idea. I'm so sorry. I don't know what Robert's Rules of Order is.
All right. I didn't either before I was told about this question. Robert's Rules of Order is, Scott, do you want to field that? What is Robert's Rules of Order?
Well, in context of the question a little more, a lot of people come into town government thinking they can make a big change and get their projects going. But I guess I was kind of curious, in who among the newcomers have you watched a government in action? Have you watched how the process works? Are you familiar with the Robert's Rules of Order? Because a lot of people get into the meetings and they're just like, what's the procedure here? So I was just curious how familiar you are, how familiar you are with government procedures.
Elise?
Well, having worked in local government, I've been in front of councils, so on the other side of the table, and understand how that process works in terms of, you know, answering questions and providing the information needed to make important decisions. So, I guess, being on the other side of that, the expectation would be to be presented with the information needed to make important decisions.
Okay. Glenn, how about you?
So, Robert's Rule of Order. I was in Future Farmers of America in 10th, 11th, 9th grade. Actually took an entire semester on this. And basically, it's how you run a meeting. You have a person who's in charge of it, i.e. the mayor. People motion, you approve motions. And it's to have a civil, conductive, productive meeting. Like, that's the point of it. I'm Valley Pines HOA president, we use that to run our meetings. It's the only way you can get things done, so you don't spend two hours talking about parking.
All right. So you did 10th, 11th, and 9th grades in that order? Okay. That works fine. David, let's hear from you down there.
Yeah, so I've experienced it in steering committee meetings from certain clients like to use those kind of rules. And business fraternity in college, we had that in our chapter meetings. And I've observed town council here, there's new ones, obviously, any place you have to learn when they show up in an organization like this. And I think it's an important question, because you need to understand the fundamentals so you can work within the system in order to have a positive effect. I think it's a great question. Looking forward to learning that.
Okay. Tiffany?
Well, obviously, I'm new in this process. I've never worked for government. I don't think if I were, the reason why I'm running isn't because I think I can come in and change things immediately, make big changes. That said, I think there is something to say about Robert's Rule of Order, and having that guide to be able to have productive meetings, because like Glenn said, you don't want to spend hours just on one topic. I think it also teaches you to be a better listener, but a better participator, especially when your perspective or opinion doesn't line up with someone else's.
Okay. And Dieter?
I think as far as Robert's Rules of Order, I would have to say I had no idea what it was beforehand, but I do understand the rules of the road of a productive meeting and how to get things done. And I'm sure there's some differences between a professional environment and probably a governmental environment, but the objective is really to, you know, accomplish the missions at hand and to work on it.
And now, Jen, we know you're familiar with the Rules of Order, having been doing it for four years now?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Here's your question. It's not going to be an easy one. "In a lawsuit against, this is submitted, in a lawsuit against the town by resident Ted Guy, a judge ruled that your communications by email to other council members on policy issues were unlawful. Have you corrected your communications efforts, and how can voters be sure you are serving in a transparent way?"
Sure. Great question. So, we as an organization have learned so much about our governance model and the processes that go into it. Our, in onboarding with new counselors is far more robust than what I experienced. When I was elected, we did not necessarily have the same trainings that we have now. So as an entire organization, there has been a lot of really positive evolution and learning and change from that experience.
Okay.
And for myself, I am paranoid now. The staff will attest to this. If they text me a question, I'll say, I'm not responding by text. And even if it's as simple as, are you going to eat pizza tonight? Those are just, yeah.
Okay. And then, for the rest of you, just very quick question. Do you feel that transparency-wise, the town council and the Basalt Town Government, about where they should be, should be better, you know, or could even hide things a little more? I don't know if anyone's going to pick that one, but, let's go down line. David, why don't you start?
I had a little trouble hearing that.
It's just a question about, how do you feel the transparency and sort of how open the Basalt Town Government is? Do you feel we're doing a good job, or could we do better?
Well, I, you know, I think the trajectory like Jen alluded to, it's in the right direction. You know, for, in years past, you'd read about lawsuits, and this candidly, I don't want to go into the negative space, but you read about the lawsuits and things that go on. I think from what I've seen so far is that there's, yeah, robust processes around governance and the trainings that we've had since candidates have been, you know, really good. I anticipate that, you know, if you're on council, there's going to be even more that you're going to learn in the trainings orientation for that. And, yeah, I think it's definitely in the right direction. I think the town expects it. I think that the changes that we've seen are a reflection of what the town wants.
Great. Glenn? How do you think we're doing?
So I'm going to do a callback. That would be Robert's Rule of Order. Like, if you understand what a quorum is, you understand that if you're on council, you can't communicate with three people at the same time. Otherwise, you're in violation of sunshine laws, if it's not allowed, you know, to be pulled up by the press, because you guys can look up anything you want to. Understanding those kinds of things is going to keep you out of that situation. And I think the town, as far as transparency, we had the ballot question for 3A because we realized the tax issue got messed up, so I think they've done a great job being transparent.
Okay. Tiffany?
Yeah, I just was at, Elise and I were at a meeting, Jen was there, and David actually was there also. We had a meeting with the town and every department and how things work. And it was really great to see the hard work that staff is doing to make sure that things are transparent, especially with budget, and like Glenn was saying, with the tax issue that took place. So, transparency is important, yes.
Okay. Elise?
She's still what I was going to say. Sorry. No, it's okay. I agree. I think that we're moving in the right direction. I think that the meeting that these folks referenced was really, really great to get the opportunity to meet with all the departments and understand what everybody does and how much they do. I'm so impressed. Thirty-four full-time employees doing as much as they're doing is, you know, I think that deserves a round of applause. So, I definitely think we're moving in the right direction, and we should keep it up.
Great. And Dieter?
I think it was clearly something that they needed, that we needed to learn from, and I think they have, and I think it's been good since.
Wonderful. All right. "Now, there are a few hundred older adults living in the Eljebel Basalt area, over 10,000 in the entire valley. Eagle County operates some senior services at the Eagle County Building, right here, while Pittkin operates out of Aspen. Could you envision the town of Basalt working with Eagle and Pittkin to have a dedicated space for older adults in Basalt?" I assume is the question. In Basalt? Yeah, okay. Well, so the question is senior housing and senior activities and a senior center. Where do we come down on that? Glenn?
So I live in Valley Pines. That was envisioned originally as a senior housing development. You had to be 55 years or older to live there and to occupy a residency. It was also developed with medical facilities right next door in conjunction, so that everything was right there, you didn't have to commute. You only have one parking spot. That's been a huge fan of every one of our residents. Unfortunately, that didn't work. The senior housing used to pay Valley Pines to the tune of about $10,000 a month to have their meals on wheel- The senior housing used to pay Valley Pines to the tune of about $10,000 a month to have their meals on wheels there. And it didn't work. The previous HOA board went to the town, got them to lift the restriction of 55 years or older, because there wasn't enough people to buy it. I'm not sure, unfortunately, that those kind of things, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of volume for it. I think the older people have homes, live in homes, and own them. So I don't know.
Okay, Tiffany?
Just in that response, I don't think we take care of our elderly as well as we should in this country. And so I think that senior housing is an important issue here. I think that we should work with Eagle and Pittkin Counties to make that work. I have a mother-in-law in a nursing home, not here, but her care is very important. I've worked with two hospice organizations on the East Coast. And just seeing how, even in senior housing, moving in that transitional stage where people aren't being taken care of, it would be nice to know that people that live in this valley have an option. Whether that's, you know, here in Basalt or in Eljabelle, but I think that it's an issue we should consider for sure.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yes, I am so impressed with Glenwood Springs. They are very forward-thinking and ahead on their senior housing and senior care. It's one of those projects that I have not gotten around to, but I really want to ask the Glenwood Springs city manager of what was the background and process on that? I'd like to know more about it and how we can have a successful. I think Glenn had a very realistic answer. And sometimes the reality isn't what we want to hear. And it's also a decade or more later, two decades, since that development has been created. And it is something that Aspen and Pittkin County are really considering. And they do have successful examples of the senior housing by the hospital, by Valley View Hospital. And the Mid Valley Medical Center, that is really growing. At this time, within the Willets development, there is nothing planned that is specific senior housing. We have teacher affordable housing, and we have SKECO affordable housing. And I think that it is, in the near future, something to strongly be considered.
Okay, Dieter?
Yes, I think we can work with the valley's partners to try to solve the issue of senior housing. I think it's, you know, it's nice to have, you know, some of these locations throughout the valley, but the impact of taking care of an elderly person on one's family, you know, it would be difficult to travel to Glenwood on a regular basis to show your loved one that you care for them in appropriate amount. So yes, I do believe that the entire valley should be working on this project together. And I do believe that there's a home for something in Basalt beyond that, you know, that's...
Elise?
Well, I have a statistic here that 40% of the Basalt population is over the age of 50. So I think that this is clearly going to be a progressive issue as folks age. I know there's a big desire to age in place, I mean, not just here in Basalt, but like all over the country. But it gets to a point where you do need additional facilities. And one recurring theme in the master plan outreach was a gathering place. So I think that would be a good place to start, is at least to have a space. And it doesn't necessarily need to be just the seniors. It could be a multi-generational space, which I think would be very engaging and have that opportunity for folks to interact and continue to keep their minds and bodies active as they age. And then looking farther ahead at a possible facility situation where we could, you know, keep people close by, as David said.
And David?
See, I think senior services is something we would definitely want to work with our partners in Pittkin and Eagle Counties for. It would be, the ideal solution, and again, it would be based on demand, would be a regional solution for the Mid Valley, because it's like somebody, I think when the question was framed up, talk about there's Aspen and Glenwood, and they have what they have. I think the solution would definitely be a Mid Valley solution. And there's probably the demand there, and probably something we should look into. I think probably the same thing could also be said about a youth center and things for our kids who aren't, you know, elementary school age but aren't adults yet. You know, they need some services like that as well for after-school and things like that.
Okay. Now, most of you probably know tomorrow, unless, you know, barring something really bizarre happening, we're going to end up with a new, with a proposal for the Pan and Fork. How do you, what lessons could we have learned? Like, I think what I would like to know is, having seen the process that we've gone through over the past few years, what could we have done differently? And then I'm also curious how you feel about the product that we're getting. Is it a good compromise, or would you have wanted to go more park, more development? Just curious how you feel about it. Elise, why don't you start?
Okay, I'll start with the second half of the question first. I do think it's a good compromise. I would have liked to have seen more affordable housing. And by affordable, I don't necessarily mean workforce housing, but literally housing that can be afforded. I fear that with the market as it is now, with the lack of housing options, that those units are going to be extremely expensive and price myself and other, you know, Basalt residents right out of the market. But in terms of the proportion of development to park, I think that it did respond to what the community asked for. And then the first half of that question, lessons learned. That's a tough one. I think the timeliness of it was difficult because there was so much, like, personal emotional attachment to the property. And that really took time to kind of wade through. So I guess, to try and be brief, I would say that maybe the first thing would almost have been a retreat. Maybe not exactly a retreat, but some kind of, sort of delving into the emotional connection to the space to try and to tease out what was really important, instead of just sort of, kind of almost felt like more of a spaghetti-on-the-wall approach.
Okay. Well, Tiffany, you just name-dropped, why don't you?
So, thank you. I don't want to turn this off again. So I'll answer the second part of the question as well. I think it was a good compromise. I agree with Elise on the fact of the, you know, housing that is affordable, not necessarily workforce either. I wasn't here for the entire process, so I can't comment on how it all has panned out. But what I can say is that, gosh, it took a long time.
A forking long time.
A forking long time. And so, I guess, I like what it's going to do for the downtown area of Basalt. I think that Old Town can be, have, can be revitalized in a way where people spend, you know, more time in that area. And so I'm looking forward to, not looking at the past, but moving forward and seeing, you know, how things progress with that development there and what that does for downtown Basalt.
Okay. David, what's your take on the Pan and Fork?
Yeah, so again, a lot of it predates Elise living here. But I would say that, you know, there's a lot to unpack in that question. But to keep it, to keep it brief, I think it's, the biggest complaint I would have would say something that could have been done differently is that it strayed from what the, kind of the character, the spirit of the space was before, in that it was an affordable place to live. So in the end, kind of the second part of the question, it's a good compromise, right? I mean, it's, compromises are inevitably, everybody's left wanting something more, but they're okay with it. I think there probably could have been more affordable housing. I also have concerns with the sequencing and, you know, the fact that it could be, you know, seven years till there's a restaurant, when the main goal of the space is vitality. So, and I think a lot of that's going to get hashed out tomorrow night. But, you know, that's how I would answer that.
Great, thank you. Dieter?
I, you know, I, so to the first part of the question, I would say compromise, yes. I think probably could have been better. I would have liked to have seen more affordable housing. But I'm, what I'm pleased about is hopefully the part that we will learn from is how long it took, that a compromise was required to get, you know, to get something on the table that can actually be built and contribute to the community, as opposed to an open space for so long. And then, I guess to some extent, the lessons, you know, that we hope we learn, we'll still have to kind of unpack as we go when we are faced with this kind of decision about our community again. Hopefully, I'm hoping that the lessons are, you know, maybe, maybe we see more of what we're actually voting for, buying, or getting, so it can hopefully steer the discourse around that in a more positive manner.
And Jen, you have been front and center.
I have.
Are there any things through this process that you maybe would have liked to have seen gone differently?
So I'm in a little bit of a time warp. Four years ago, when I was running for my first term, I was at the same debate. It was held at the church in Emma. And the Pan and Fork was the hot topic, and it was what we were all talking about at the, and here we are four years later. The lessons learned are that, and to be clear, my platform then was all park. No development on there. I wanted to see it as a world-class green space park that was activated by activities, festivals, et cetera. What I have learned in the four years since then is that we, I learned about reality. That was the biggest learning, is what can we realistically do? We had various different proposals come in front of us, and we're at a good, realistic point right now. What I also learned about the process is that we are truly a 49-51% kind of community, where it went to the community for the bond purchase, to purchase that entire three acres and have it as a complete park. And that failed. Very, very slim, but it did fail. And so it has really shown how the council and how the town is flexible and able to deal with the changes that have and find, make lemonade with lemons. And so I think that we're going to come out of this with some affordable housing, a really amazing park by the river, and we'll see, we'll see what occurs.
Okay, and Glenn?
So lessons learned, obviously, when you have a project of that scale, get started. And then an election happens about a year after it. It's going to create divisiveness, and that's what happened. And unfortunately, alluding to what Jen said, it turned the community into a 49-51%. Some people wanted it one way. It was put to a vote, just like she said. It lost by a very, very slim margin. So at this point, I feel that the council has done as best they could do with what the community's wishes are. And that's reached the compromise where it's at. Is it perfect? Is it what everybody wants? Nope. But that's part of what a government is. I mean, it could have been a lot better. Things could have been worked out a lot better seven years ago. That just didn't happen.
Okay. Now, you're all familiar with the master plan that we just spent a year working on. How well do you know it, and where do you guys see future growth going? And how much future growth do you think is appropriate for Basalt? And in that question, let's talk a little bit about the tree farm also. Is that too much? Is that going to be just enough? Should we cool it until we're done with that? Just sort of overall thoughts on growth. Dieter, why don't you start?
Overall thoughts on growth, the master plan, how well do I know it? It's a long document. I haven't memorized every page of it. But I see it as a, you know, I think the master plan is a wise document in the sense that, you know, town's plan, it's not a unique idea to our community to have a plan for the future. I like how bold it is in certain instances. Sometimes the boldness doesn't appear to me to be realistic. But, you know, I see it more as a living document to where it evolves as the community evolves. Because, you know, I wasn't here necessarily. The first thing actually I did when I got into town was read the master plan. And that was the previous one, I think. So I see it as evolving document, sort of a roadmap of how to develop the community. And it's something for us to kind of hold as a benchmark of how we're doing. And, you know, maybe, there certainly are some things in there that are probably unrealistic, but there are other things that there are. But what allows us to do is take incremental steps to move, to make this community better, basically, you know, as we go along pursuing something.
Well, I think with 340 units at the tree farm, 110 at Stotz Mill, potentially another 100 at the Fields, another 100 plus going in at Willets. Is there a number, and we'll throw this one to you, Jen, because you might have a number in mind. How much is too much? Where do we stop?
Again, that scientific carrying capacity study would answer that question. It's the year 2020, and we don't know that answer. From my gut, if I could wave a magic wand, but I can't because it's a train, and it's rolling, and you just can't stop in the middle and say, whoa, everything, there's moratorium. I mean, maybe Aspen can do that, but Basalt, we can't have that necessarily. I mean, legally, we could, but we're not at that point. We have a lot unbuilt. If I could wave my magic wand, sure. I would love to take a stop and say, let's build everything that's approved and unbuilt and see how we're functioning. That's not realistic. What we need to do is have our magic, you know, our crystal globe in front of us. And that's the best thing that we're trying to do, is be wizards and look at how we can intelligently and with community in mind, let or invite landowners how to develop their parcels. The underlying zoning, I wouldn't want to necessarily stay with the current master plan. There are some issues and some things that can be improved upon, and that's what we're striving for in this one. Regarding tree farm and the process there, again, that's another reason for us to strengthen our relationship with Eagle County and as well keep our relationship very strong with Pittkin County. I really do appreciate Pittkin County's land use, rules and regulations and codes that they have in place. And I would like Basalt to be more inclined in that way. But we also straddle two counties, and we cannot force that upon Eagle County. So we're a little bit of the, you know, the child with divorced parents of go ask your mom, no, go ask your dad. And what we want to be is, we want to be the cool parent that everyone's like, yeah, we want to be part of your family. And that's what we're really striving towards, and I hope that we can all find that.
Okay. Elise, where would you, where's the best place for growth to go? Best pockets left in Basalt?
I think the urban infill is the best place. And I'm answering this based on the feedback that I got during that outreach process for the master plan. I mean, that's what I heard. I think that allows the open space on the fringes to maintain, and that's really important to folks. And so the hard part about it, though, is that different people have different definitions of what urban infill is. And so I think, you know, one thing that we'll have to do is kind of take that onion, or maybe an artichoke is a better analogy, and peel it back and really find out, like, what does that mean to people, so that we are honoring that request?
And Tiffany? And Tiffany? Now, have you reviewed the master plan, taken a look at it and stuff?
I have.
Now, well, one of our illustrious Merrill candidates right there, Rob Levitt, was saying how, um, in the master plan, there was never a chance to vote for like, almost no growth or something like that, all the options that were given on the questionnaires. Do you think that, that the master plan that we got, do you think it's a, a real representation of people's feelings, or do you think that, that more people would have voted for less development?
You know, I, I, I'm not sure, because, um, I think that if council and, and, and those that are involved in master plan are really well engaged with the community, then could find a better answer in that. Um, that said, growth is inevitable. We, we are growing. The country is growing. We have three hundred and forty million people that live in this country right now. That's only gonna grow by, I think the US Census said, by forty million people in the next twenty years. So, I, I mean, or twenty million people in the next twenty, sorry, forty million in the next twenty years. It's crazy. So, one thing in the master plan that stuck out to me was density over sprawl. Um, and I, I do think that's important. I think that we can focus on the approved developments that we have now, but we can also look forward to our future and be mindful around the environment and sustainability and how that's going to affect, um, each of us living here and for the, frankly, our children.
Okay. Glenn? Um, how do you, I mean, do you think that the amount of development heading our way is too much, not enough, just right?
So, I mean, numbers-wise, since two thousand, we've had eight hundred and thirteen new residential built, uh, units built within Basalt. Population-wise, we had two thousand, twenty-two hundred people roughly in two thousand. Right now, you've got forty-four hundred people. So that eight hundred and thirteen units equated to double the population. I personally think, right now, I think on the books, we have roughly a little over nine hundred units approved. If everybody were to pull a permit tomorrow and build nine hundred units, would that be good for the town of Basalt? Plus, you got the tree farm? Probably not. On the tree farm aspect, the disappointing thing there is you had Eagle County's planning and zoning commission recommend a Nile. Eagle County Commissioner still approved it. You had Basalt say, we'd really like some input on this. Eagle County Commissioner still approved it. Those are things that, yeah, we need to work on, but they're not good. And we've got to really step back and go, how much can we sustain? How big's our police department? How big's our schools? How big's our fire department? Highway eighty-two, is it gonna become four lanes? No, it's not. So it's already a traffic jam from original road to Whole Foods Light every single afternoon. I mean, we've got to really evaluate all these things from an environmental standpoint, growth standpoint, and as a community standpoint, what can we sustain and how much can we deal with?
And David? Let's get your thoughts on, on growth and where it should go and how much is enough. Oh, I've, I've been asked to make a, Jackie loves you guys. She's not walking out for any personal reasons. She has another meeting she has to go to. All right. Uh, David, back to you.
So, yeah, the master plan in, in growth, um, the, the big thing, I, I've heard different, kind of different variations on this. There's, there's a certain amount of capacity that we can have here in, in our, our mid-valley, in the valley, probably everywhere in the state for that matter. But, uh, so schools, roads, all the infrastructure, right? That's important. We need to make sure that we don't overload any of that. And the reason I, that what makes Basalt unique is, I mean, a ton of reasons. Rivers, mountains, hiking, all the things that we love that, 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 about this place that, um, make us want to be here and make visitors want to come here, right? So I think you have to look at constraints and then marry that with, we don't want to destroy the character of the community, which will kind of, they'll inevitably shrink the, the constraints in a little further versus a, I don't know, um, a front-range community, right? Uh, so you would never, you would never want to have those kind of constraints here because the character of the town is, is kind of the essence of the town and why people are here. So, yeah, infilling, um, making sure the master plan reflects, reflects that, relationships with our other governmental organizations around here, like the two counties, uh, that's huge, because we all have to kind of do this together.
All right. Um, we were talking about the tree farm. Uh, where do you guys come down on the subject of, I mean, should we have more talks with, uh, Ace Lane or, or the people at Sopers Village or the, the Crawford family about annexation, trying to get everyone under the same umbrella? Is that something you think we should pursue more, or is that not really on your radar? Glenn, why don't you start with that one?
Annexation's a difficult deal, just because it's voluntary. So, like Ace Lane, you would, he's got to have some incentive to want to be part of the town. Do I think it's a good idea? I mean, overall, yeah, it's the way that we as a community get to control the community. When you have these inner, underlying pockets, that's what makes it hard to go, here's what our plan is, and you're gonna follow it, because they're not part of the town. I mean, Ace Lane's a perfect example of that. Unfortunately, they're not, they're in Eagle County. They're not in Basalt. Crawford's. They're not in Basalt. They're in Eagle County. So you've got to deal with those things the best, best way you can. In the master plan, it does pretty much state the number one thing that's gonna happen for any of the outlying parcels, annexation is the very first thing that every one of them is required to do if they're gonna develop. So I think in the end, it's a good idea. How do you get there? That's a lot tougher. That's a, that's a way bigger question.
Well, we're gonna throw that question to you, David. How do we get there? How do we, how can we incentivize annexation and try to get everyone under the auspices of the town of Basalt?
Well, I don't know if you'd want everybody under the, the auspices of the town. Um, I think it's gonna be case by case, because the different stakeholders that you're talking about are gonna have different incentives. I mean, you, you gotta figure out what those incentives are with, with those, by having dialogue with those people. Um, and then i- is there somebody who wants to develop it? I mean, it just, there's a lot of variables to that, but I think ultimately each one is kind of case by case. And, and frankly, are there incentives for us to, to, it's the community want to annex that, depending on the space, right? So I, I think it just depends on the, on the parcel.
Okay. Tiffany?
Well, as far as the annexation and it being, uh, your, their own choice, I think, um, we should advocate to have them be a part of our town. I think it would help us, um, further develop the, you know, the town as a whole of what we want to revitalize, what we want to, um, spend money on within the budget moving forward. Um, I would like to see the trailer parks become a part of Basalt. Um, that's mainly a Latino Hispanic population. I think we need more integration there. So, um, it is tough how to get there, but I think it's definitely doable.
Okay. Elise?
I think, um, Glenn touched on this earlier, or maybe it was David, I'm not sure, but, um, this concept of community. And so I think a big question around annexation is how does that affect community? And not just from our side of the table, but also from the side of the table of the folks that are outside of Basalt, you know, do they want that? It means they're gonna be paying more taxes. Um, we're talking a little bit about development, but for instance, Sopers Village is already developed and outside of town limits, and, you know, I spoke with two people on Tuesday at a chamber event. One said yay and one said nay. So, um, it's definitely a complicated question, but I think, big picture, what I would advocate for is thinking about it in terms of community.
Okay. Dieter?
I'd agree with that. I think, um, you know, I mean, with regards to the sense of community, but, I mean, it's just something that the conversations have to start and, and the chip away has to begin. And again, it's not gonna be a, here's what's gonna, here's what's gonna satisfy, satisfy each, each one of the different property owners. It's gonna be a, you know, a collaborative solution, hopefully. And, and, you know, if they're on the same page with community as, as, uh, the town council is and, and the rest of the community of Basalt, then, then there'll be successes. But I can also see spots where there won't be successes.
And Jen, I'm just curious, sort of over the last four years, what kind of talks has the town had about annexation? Have there been any, or is, is this something that has come up before?
It was definitely with, well, I, I wanna, can I start with answering the same question that everyone else did? So, so the town of Basalt provides excellent public service. So that is one of the things that does attract of why to annex into the town of Basalt. Another is our tax rates are going to become very appealing, uh, to the tree farm. Um, so in order for them to maintain and create this new infrastructure, tax rates are going to be higher for the, uh, for the tree farm development than it will be in the town of Basalt. This, I have not seen the exact numbers, but I have, I have heard this. So, um, I'll, I'll start spreading that rumor. Um, so, so that's one way to attract, um, is to show what you are getting for your tax dollars and as well, um, to make that very appealing. Regarding talks with, um, yes, it did occur when the tree farm, uh, application was being, uh, reviewed. Um, there were talks between town of Basalt and, um, the tree farm representatives, and they, they, they chose not to. And we can't force it. There's, it, it's, as, as Glenn said, it's, it's by choice. And so, um, I could see property owners wanting to annex because they want to develop, um, or they want more infrastructure. Um, the, the Lake Christine Fire is a prime example of being prepared for, uh, emergencies. And so maybe, um, the insurance rates are going, going to become too high in some of the unincorporated areas because there isn't the fire protection necessary. And so again, that's going to be an interesting reason, um, to attract, uh, developers and land parcel owners to annex into the town of Basalt. We're very receptive to it. Um, and so know that, know that us as a council are not giving our staff the direction of, no, we don't want anymore. It's, it's kumbaya, come in for the hug.
Cool. All right. Um, while the majority of Basalt's residents li- live in Eagle County, it seems that people align more, just in their thinking, with Pittkin County. Would you guys agree? No, does everyone agree? Tiffany, you're kind of...
I'm, I'm not sure.
Really?
Yeah. I, I think that, um, I think that's changing.
You think that we're getting more of an Eagle County mentality?
Not an Eagle County mentality. I just think that a, um, a, you know, an inter-community of both ways of thinking. I don't think it, it needs to be one way or another. I think that we can gain things from Eagle County, and we can gain things from Pittkin County. I think that's why we're so special here in Basalt, that we share Eagle and Pittkin County. Um, I'm not saying that I don't, I don't disagree with that statement. I'm just, I think it's a broader...
Well, then we'll, we'll stay with you for this one. What I was going to get into is that we've always sort of had more, I feel, more of a Pittkin County mentality with, in terms of development and things like that, which is why you see Willetts and the tree farm in Eagle County rather than Pittkin County. Our communications with Eagle County have not been great over the years, but they do seem to be getting better. What else can we do to help Eagle County understand our mindset when issues like the tree farm or the Fields project, the things like that arise?
Well, when development in itself and growth, um, it can be scary. And so, you know, whether, yep, see, I'm not even using the microphone. Hopefully, I talk loud, so hopefully you can hear me. Okay, thanks. Um, is that, uh, as far as development is concerned, what we're different from Pittkin County is that we're, we move slower. We're not developing at a tremendously fast rate, um, in the same sense as the way that, um, Pittkin County has moved. So I think what puts, puts us apart is that mindful growth aspect, where we're not just saying, yes, 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 let's go, let's build everything all at once. It's, um, it's determined and it's thoughtful and it's a process.
Okay. David? How do you, what, what can we do to better foster communications with Eagle County?
I think for, for Eagle County, you know, we're, we're, and to a certain degree, the, uh, the non-contiguous nature of where the, the two parts of their counties, you know, with the mountains between them and everything kind of factors in here. It's, it's just like a constraint we have to kind of work around. I, I think, though, to help them understand the benefits that they can reap basically by working with us more. I think that's what we really need to do, because it's, I mean, this part of Eagle County that's in Basalt and the mid-valley, I mean, it's, it's, it's as special as anywhere over on the other side in the, in, you know, the kind of I-70 part. And I think that, that the more that there's development, the more that, that happens in that area, the more important it's gonna be for them overall. And that's just a partnership and a relationship we're gonna just need to continue to build over the years and strengthen. It's not in the best shape right now, um, from what I gather, from what people are saying and what I read, but I think it could be strengthened, and I think it needs to be for what we want to achieve.
Okay. Dieter?
I think, uh, we have to act, actively engage them, uh, to a greater level and, and keep the, you know, lines of communication open between the two parties. You know, in, in doing so, we really want to illustrate, you know, what we can provide them and the growth and, and what it is that they want to do with us, hopefully, you know, to help, you know, the valley's overall growth.
Elise?
I'm gonna take a step back to the original question and say that I'm not as confident that everybody agrees that we're, we're Pittkin County more than we're Eagle County. I think I've heard quite a bit of frustration with the, some of the regulatory processes with Pittkin County and how laborious they are. So I wouldn't necessarily say that it's one way or the other. Um, and I think maybe the first step towards better communication with Eagle County is to acknowledge that they're not always the bad guys.
Sure.
Um, and then I think, you know, FaceTime is always important, you know, and that's part of the problem being over here when all of the other buildings and everything, county buildings and such are over on the other side of the hill. And, I mean, having this building here is a, is a big step forward, um, in order to have that connection with them and really be able to have that FaceTime. But I think, um, making sure that we are representing ourselves and, um, getting over there as well to the other side of the hill. So...
Would you be making regular trips over to Eagle? I mean, you can always throw in a Costco visit. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, we go to Costco like a couple, every couple of weeks, so, yeah.
There you go. Jen?
I have gone to Eagle County, um, and stopped. Every time that I do go by Costco, I do stop by and pop my head in and say hello to the commissioners, um, or staff. Uh, there is, it's really important for us to acknowledge, so this is a little insider baseball, but to acknowledge our positive, uh, reputation within Eagle County. A bit of why they, I would say, from my perspective, they're hands-off from us, we're really wearing big, big kid pants compared to other municipalities in the, in the Eagle Valley. Um, we have more affordable housing, um, we have our finances together, we have an early childhood coalition. There's, there's just so much that every time that we meet with Eagle County, they are very, uh, very positive and reflect of, oh my goodness, you guys really have your stuff together. We wish that our other municipalities were like that. So I think that that's something for us to recognize and be proud of, um, that we're doing a really good job, um, in, in saddling both of these counties. And it's really important for us to play both of them to our, to our benefits. Um, and that we're, we're trying to do, um, with the communication. So what we can do more with Eagle County, um, we do have a joint meeting, um, at least every year. It would be nice to, to make that a little more frequently, maybe quarterly. That's tough to fit into the schedule when you look at if there's two months a meeting, or two meetings a month, excuse me, um, fitting that in. Um, but I, I've got to say that, that the new Eagle County, um, staff is very, very receptive. They're really nice, and they, they are being proactive as well. And I believe that it's also part of our mindset, as Elise said, to, it's easy to, to villainize and, and make them evil county. Um, but, but it's also up to us to, um, to, to look positively upon that relationship as well.
Did you say evil county?
It's really easy to, um, slide that out there, and they're not. It's Eagle County.
Yeah. No, I've never heard that before. That's great. And we're in their building. Glenn?
So on the first part of the question, I would say that I think most people...
So on the first part of the question, I would say that I think most people are probably aligned with Pitt King County because most of us probably moved to Snowmass Village or moved to Aspen and then we really liked it. And then this is the place we could afford to come and, and so that's where that tends to happen. As far as strengthening your relationship, ultimately the best thing you do is get an Eagle County commissioner who's from this side of the valley on that board. That would make a huge, huge difference. Now, it's very, very hard to achieve because of the massive population on that side compared to over here. It's not to say it's not possible. The other thing you can do is, and we've got a great Eagle County Planning and Zoning Commission Board that has lots of locals on there who do say, hey, this is what this community wants and keep that kind of thing going. That's going to be the key to strengthening those relationships and making sure they understand where we're coming from.
Okay. All right. Now we're going to talk about the, uh, the gun range and Lake Christine because they're, now that we have our, uh, $450,000 sidewalk from Roaring Fork Conservancy out, I mean, it's close to Chris, to Lake Christine. There's been talk of, of making Lake Christine more of a town park. Um, how do we feel about that? Also, this is going to be a big question, so you're going to have to take notes here. The gun range, would we like to see it moved? If so, do you have any other places in mind? And if not, are we doing enough to mitigate the danger and the sound impacts? So that whole area, let me get your thoughts on the gun range and sort of the future of Lake Christine. And then how much of this should Basalt be paying for and how much of it should be CPW? Jen, you want to start?
Sure. I'd love to start with that loaded question.
Big one.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, looking at the gun range, yes, I would love it to move. Realistically, where is it going to move? It can move further on the CPW existing location. It could move to one of the old quarries that's further down Highway 82 near Cattle Creek. That was designated as a, a possibility. Um, to, so then it brings up the mitigation. Okay. So, so that's dreaming. Now let's get to reality. Um, reality, the cost to CPW to mitigate and clean up that site is substantial. They're, they're not going to be inspired to do that. Um, I feel that we should continue, uh, the pressure and following the very specific process, communication process with a, uh, a, a federal government entity to, uh, to press them to mitigate. Our clean water is so important and protecting our watersheds is paramount, especially next to our Gold River, um, waters. That's a major part of our economy. The shooting range is also part of our economy, but I'm not going to, um, you know, um, take one for the other. I could euphemize that, but I'll, I'll pass on it. Um, looking at Lake Christine, there's a lot of fantastic opportunity there. Um, to just imagine walking along the, if, if there were, and this is another thing that I would love to see in the next, um, that I would, I will work for you to achieve, is walking paths along the Roaring Fork River all the way from the Whitewater Park to, um, the Lake Christine Bridge. Wouldn't that be dreamy? There's already existing paths in certain places. There's a lot of encroachment of private property, but we can start to clear up those paths and, um, make them more pedestrian friendly. So that path could lead all the way up to Lake Christine. Uh, by investing some money into the Lake Christine area, um, beyond, uh, a fishing pond, um, but to make it a, a, an, a nature preserve or a place to visit. There's a lot of people that go there for birding, for a lot of various different reasons. So I feel that we can, um, project some of our post-fun, funds, um, looking eight years out. They're pretty well spoken for, for the next five years on, uh, the, the CIP. That's the Capital Improvement Plan. Um, and then looking at then the finances of the gun range, um, if there's environmental cleanup to get CPW started on that, yes, I'm okay with the Town of Basalt investing some funds. I'm not saying a quarter of a million dollars are putting our citizens in debt, but yes, we, we should invest and match some funds to, to incentivize, um, our partnership to accomplish that.
Glenn, you want to field this one?
So being on the post committee, looking at the five-year capital pra- plan that she's talking about that Jen's mentioned, we have $50,000 year mark to go towards helping that gun range and then another 500,000. Me personally being on the committee, I said, I don't think it's a good idea. CPW is a state-run agency. They get all their money from hunting permits. The herd up there has gotten less and less. That's going to make working out any kind of deal with them very difficult to improve that parcel. There's also a lot of work to be done there. The reason the level is so low in that pond is because the dam's not sufficient. I think the biggest thing you do is get the people who want to use the gun range. I'm not opposed to the gun range, but people who want to use it, they should want to put their best foot forward and go, hey, let's raise some money and let's enclose this thing. Let's make this the gun club we want it to be. And I think encouraging them to do their part versus saddling the town with, like, if you truly, how many people that live in the town use the gun range versus how many people are annoyed by the gun range? I mean, you, you really got to do like what's right to do with the funds that are there.
Yeah. Elise?
Oh, I'm just laughing. This is probably another one of those 49, 51% issues. I think that having the gun range, um, is kind of an important part of our heritage, our history as a community. So I would not advocate for getting rid of it altogether. I think it's important for folks to have a safe place to go to learn how to use a gun. Um, lots of folks still hunt, still go to the range for fun. I've been there myself. I don't really know enough about the issue to comment on the mitigation of the lead or whatever contaminants there are. Um, and, um, similarly, I don't have enough information to comment on where you could move it to if you had to move it. I think that, um, Glenn has a really good point in saying if the users want it, then they should be willing to pay something for it. And I, as a previous range user, I think that that's fair to say, like, if you're going to use it, you know, we have a, a use fee or whatever that might be. As far as Lake Christine is concerned, um, I like it being sort of a wild, wildlands area. Um, I don't know that I would necessarily advocate to put money towards it. I think we have some good parks in Basalt right now. But back to my very, very original statement, um, it's not about what I want, it's what the community wants. And if the community said, we want to get rid of the gun range and we want to expand Lake Christine into a park, then I would have to honor that.
Dieter, how do you feel about the gun range?
I, um, personally, I don't, I don't enjoy it being there and I don't listening, don't, don't enjoy it being there. But, um, what I enjoy and what the community wants are two different things. Um, what I would like is maybe, you know, Glenn's idea about, uh, you know, pay-to-play sort of some extent. Um, if you, if you want something, you should support it and, and, you know, as we kind of live around it, kind of honor their neighbors at the same times. Um, if we want to be good neighbors, then, you know, hopefully they would respect that and return the favor. Um, and with regards to Lake Christine, um, I frankly don't know that much about it. I've been up there once and it was dry. Um, so it wasn't really that, that pretty to me. But, you know, again, it would be, you know, again, you know, to agree with Elise's, you know, if, if the voters of the town and the people of the town said, we would like for you to act on that and make that into something, um, that we can enjoy more frequently, then, then we should honor that.
Uh, David, we're going to you next.
So yeah, in hindsight, it would, it would be nice if the gun range wasn't right there, um, just because of the sound and, and, uh, and the environmental concerns. But, you know, it, I, I don't think it's realistic to move it. I, I do think we should explore options to kind of mitigate the, the sound and the environmental impacts with stakeholders like CPW and, you know, enthusiasts who use the range. I think that's something that we, we could do. And as far as, um, Lake Christine and just the area around there, I think there's, there's probably an opportunity to expand trails just in that general CPW area. Again, I, I know that there's, you know, a, um, animal migratory patterns and things and hunting and, and things up there that we have to take into account. But there's probably opportunity to make more of a, uh, a hiking area right on our doorstep, um, in that area. Maybe that's, is a grand bargain that could be reached with all of this stuff, um, for that area right on the edge of our town.
Great. Tiffany?
Um, so as far as the gun range, I lived in Baltimore City, so the noise doesn't. That said, uh, I come from a family of hunters, gun owners. Um, I have no problem with it being there. Like Elise said, I don't have enough information to know where it could move. That said, I think it's important more for safety around the environment. I mean, that, the Lake Christine fire was really scary. Um, we evacuated. So, uh, so having its members being involved in that process to enclose it, update it, however they feel fit, that's safe, uh, to continue to habitate there, I think is important. Lake Christine, I would like to see some hiking, more hiking trails around that area. I wouldn't change it to an extreme necessarily, but maybe a carve-out of a, you know, uh, uh, an additional hiking trail, but nothing, um, nothing too much to disrupt the, you know, the, the animals, the wildlife and, and hunters for that matter that go into that area.
Great. All right. Um, Basalt's identity. What is it? What do you think it should be? And, and are we doing enough to, to really forge an identity? Start with you, Elise.
I think, um, and this is again based on information, you know, that we collected during the master planning process, that Basalt is struggling with their identity. Um, the addition of Willets has really kind of confused people, I think. We shouldn't even really be calling it Willets. It should just be called Basalt. And, and it was Elgabel before that, so that's even more confusing. So we have this, you know, this barbell town, but I think that there's a lot of opportunity there. My mom lives in Bellingham, Washington, and it was originally four towns that became one. And each town still has its kind of unique flavor about it. Um, I also grew up in Northern California, so San Francisco is one of my favorite big cities. You know, and you have all the different neighborhoods. You have Hayes Valley and you have the Haight District and all kinds of things. And it's still San Francisco. So, um, I think some work needs to be done in figuring out, you know, what, what we are, who we are, and how we embrace having these sort of two separate neighborhoods. But I know for sure that folks are really wanting to maintain small-town character, and vibrancy, and having this sort of community gathering space where you run into people that you know and, um, arts and culture and events and, and fun things to bring people together.
Well, all right. Tiffany, are we a fishing town? Are we a, a biking town? Are we a, an arts town? Are we a, a, um, environmental knowledge town? What kind of town are we? What is our identity?
I think we're all of those things. Um, I think we're a fishing town. I think we are working towards a better arts community. Arts and music is, when we moved here, didn't realize how, um, broad it was across the valley. I think it's wonderful. Um, I think, like Elise said, we, we're still developing an identity. There is still separation between Old Town, Willets, um, and we need to, you know, come together on both of those things and understand that we are one place. We are one community. We are, um, we can be, you know, a, a, a mountain biker on trails and we can be hikers and we can be, um, fishermen and we can, you know, um, create art in this one beautiful place. I think that's what makes us unique and, and helps us stand out from other communities. But it's about understanding each other's differences and being okay with that.
Glenn, what are we?
We're small-town USA that everybody wants to be. I mean, look how many people want to move and want to live in this environment. That's what we are. We're just a great community that everybody wants to be a part of.
All right. David?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if I could say that better, but yeah, it's, it's, there's multiple identities. We're all here for different reasons and we all get along and appreciate all the different things that, like, I don't, I'm a terrible fisherman. I'll, I'll go ahead and say it. But I, I, I appreciate all of the, how good and all the fishing that I, when I do go out with people who are better than me, how, how great it is. Um, yeah, just the, the fact that we have, uh, you know, you can live in this place where you have all of the arts, the outdoors, everything you could possibly want, yet you're in the middle of this pristine natural beauty. You just, it, it just sounds silly almost when I try to put it into words, how great the place is. But, um, and that's, leave it to a marketing person to come up with the campaign, but we have multiple identities.
All right. Dieter?
Yeah, I agree. We have, you know, it's, the, the, the identity of the town is, is extremely diverse and there's a little bit of something for everybody. And it does, it does speak to the, the small-town mentality. It, you know, but it i- it is 51, 49% every once in a while though, too. Um, so, you know, to circle back to the very beginning of this conversation, you know, it's, I think that the community really needs to be our focus and tie in our two sides together. You know, as a circulator was recommended earlier, I think that's a great idea. I'd love to see something like River Days come back, um, be, be more shared between the two communities. Um, because at the end of the day, it's the community that, that we really, really love and would love to see grow and prosper.
All right. And Jen?
So we are a safe, amazing place to live. Go back to the post-Lake Christine fire. Remember all that PTSD? And remember, think back to all those signs and the parades that we had and that outpouring of love and appreciation. If you want to see what a community is made of and what our identity is, put yourself in crisis and then you're going to truly see what we are. And that's what came forth.
Wow. Powerful. All right. With the Art Base getting a new home, probably starting tomorrow, um, and Takah getting a new home, we're, we've got a lot of momentum built up in the arts right now. Do we want to continue on that? I mean, do we want to seek sort of creative district certification, that sort of thing? Or, or do you think we're doing all right? Or, or do we need more? And then within that, is there any, do you see any opportunity to work with Carbondale or other neighboring communities on just sort of becoming an arts region, if such a thing exists? But curious what your thoughts would be on that, Dieter. Where, where are we arts-wise?
Well, it'd be cool to see an arts region, um, especially because I don't know if it exists. But, you know, it would be fantastic, I think, for a valley to be known, to be an arts region. I think with regards to arts, uh, you know, I'm extremely excited about where we are. You know, live music, comedy performances, um, you know, and then to have a full-on art center in a town with our population is enviable, I suppose. I think if you stacked every other town up against that. So I like where it's at. Um, I would be more concerned about the sustainability of it than I am necessarily having to grow it any further.
Jen?
Sure. So part of, uh, building support for Basalt's economy is including in diversified businesses and that includes supporting the arts. Uh, arts provide a lot of, uh, economic benefits along with cultural benefits. So we should partner with, with Carbondale and also we should partner with the library and the schools. Uh, the arts are an incredible way for youth to connect with adults. It's just a multi-generational ac- activity, uh, that, uh, that, that we, that we can support. And the beauty of, um, our, our finances related to it, um, Takah is funded by, well, they have raised a lot of funds on their own, um, but there's, there's taxes, uh, that pay for that, uh, that support. And so it's not necessarily an additional property tax and it's not something that we need to levy further. Um, but it's something that we have created and so therefore it's creating, um, and hopefully going to sustain, um, this economic boost and heartfelt.
Tiffany, I saw you nodding before. You want to, where, where are we arts-wise?
I think we're getting there arts-wise, um, with Takah, with the Art Base. It's a beautiful space. I have, uh, my oldest son is on autism spectrum and he's an artist. I have, uh, my oldest son is on autism spectrum, and he's an artist, and so just seeing how far, um, he's come with art and the opportunities that, um, our valley has offered, or offers, uh, is important. I would like to see collaboration with, um, Carbondale, Glenwood Springs, Aspen, in the same way that Aspen Music Festival and School implements their music programs into Basalt schools. You know, it's Beginning Strings Program, it's, you know, all these different music activities that run up and down the valley. I would love to, I would love to collaborate in, in an arts form, in that way. To have an arts region would be a beautiful thing for children and for, um, adults, all ages.
Great. Elise?
I think that we could definitely do more in the public arts realm. And there are certainly some best practices to be learned from not just the other communities in our valley, but outside of the valley as well. It would be interesting to look into what benefits there are behind, um, creating a creative district. I know there are some funding benefits to it, um, but then, you know, what are the requirements behind that? So, checks and balances, of course, um, opportunity costs. But I would love to see personally, more, um, ver- variety of public art. And I think that there is support for that in the community, for sure, based on the comments that I, again, keep, I feel like I'm a broken record here.
No, it's good. Cause you next one will be like, "Well, door knocking, I heard this." And so, that was great to be there. Um, so, recognize you for that. It's, it's okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. So, yeah, there was, you know, definitely a lot of support for the arts. And my understanding, Glenn and I were talking about this at the beginning, is that an arts master plan may be underway soon, so that would be an exciting opportunity for some planned, um, development in that realm.
Okay, well, that, the, uh, an arts master plan, sounds like a good idea. How active should town be in promoting the arts? And, I mean, we have a couple of Rita's funding them, should we be doing more, do you think, Glenn? In an official capacity?
Yeah, I'd say we're good where we're at. I mean, alluding to what Dieter said earlier, it's like, we've got good funding in place, let's make sure what we have there is organized, implemented appropriately, and the funds are spent appropriately, but as far as putting any more money into it, I can't say that we, everything that everybody wants to accomplish within this community, I don't know that there's enough money to go around.
Okay, David?
I, I think if we grew arts, uh, the arts, that's one of the things with music that I'm passionate about, I, but visual arts, like performing arts, uh, music, uh, paintings, a- any art out, like the, the metal, um, I forgot, sculptures, I guess is the best word for them, out there by, by the roads. All of that stuff, um, is great. I think the opportunity for growth, though, probably is in the region, because there's economies of scale by working with the other, um, local governments around here. I mean, for instance, uh, if there's a theater group that's going to come and, um, come to Basalt, it might be more advantageous if they have gigs at different places in the valley, and we can all kind of work together to coordinate that. I think there's an opportunity there for that. Obviously, same with music, same with, um, with an exhibition. So, I, I, yeah, I think, I think the regional part probably is the opportunity to grow a little bit.
Great. Okay, um, who was it who mentioned the, the Basalt Connector before? Glenn? All right, we'll start with you on, on this one. Would that be just sort of a convenience thing, or do you think that could actually have an impact on traffic in the mid-valley? And what other thoughts would you have on impacting traffic in the mid-valley?
I think it'd be more than a convenience, because you'd actually be able to, the convenience factor of going from, let's say, Willets to the Basalt Park and Ride, instead of driving there.
Right.
That's one less vehicle. Uh, my wife takes Rafta every single day to work up to Aspen. She gets on at the Sagewood stop. I mean, there's, or Sagewood, there's probably, depending on the time, there can be up to 30 people that are getting on that bus right there. I mean, it's potential to link, look how well it works in Carbondale. You know, you got to get the outlying neighborhoods connected to your park and ride stations with something other than their own vehicle, because if they're driving, you're not mitigating traffic.
Yeah. David? How do you feel about the connector and traffic in general?
Well, traffic in general, I, I, I don't think we want to see too much more traffic, if any, you know, there's, that's a whole other topic with congestion, you know, how you deal with congestion in the valley overall. I, I'd, I'd say, though, with a connector in Basalt, I'd want to see what the demand was like for that, and make sure that there was, the benefits were there, um, in order to do that. If the demand is there, absolutely, you know, getting cars off the road is, is a big deal, but you got to, if you're going to outlay the, the capital and the, and the operating expense to keep it running for, um, something like that with Rafta or wh- whomever else, you want to make sure that the man's there, so you're getting the benefit.
Okay, um, Tiffany?
I would love to see a connector, um, more so for my kids, for them to be able to just hop on and go to Old Town, get to the library quicker. Not to say that they can't ride their bike now, but, um, just giving them that autonomy and, um, being able to, to do that on their own, uh, yeah, would help out a lot. Plus, it would keep me from carpooling, you know, constantly back and forth with, with kids getting to places. If there's an after-school activity and they need to get home, and we're, we're in Willets, and they can hop on that connector and, and get there without disrupting work schedules and things like that, I'm for it.
Okay. And Elise, what else can we be doing traffic-wise to make things a little better?
Well, first and foremost, I would say that we need to bring more jobs into our own community, so we don't have to drive anywhere. I work, I live in the new Roaring Fork apartment building, and, um, when I first started working for my current company, they were located above Subway. I had a five-minute commute, it was fantastic. Now, my company is located down in Willets, and even so, it's still a nice, small commute, reasonable, going the opposite direction, which is fantastic. So, that would be the first thing. I don't know how you would necessarily, um, control that in terms of development, whether that would be some sort of requirement, you know, X number of residential units for X number of business. I, I don't know how that would work necessarily, but I think definitely increasing the, or maybe decreasing is better, better way to say it, decreasing the need to commute, um, and having our workers and our, be local, instead of driving from all over the place, number one. The second thing that I think of is something that, um, I saw when I lived in Berkeley, California, there are BART stations, which are the underground, um, railway system, and a sort of informal, um, commute, um, carpool situation popped up, where people would wait at the BART stations, and people would pull through in their cars, and four people would jump in, or however many seats there were, and they would go, and then everybody had a benefit, the riders could ride for free, and the person driving the car got the carpool discount. So, maybe just an, another idea would be some kind of informal system like that.
I, I do that on a small scale. I go and pick up people at the Intercept lot and drive up to Two Creeks.
Exactly.
Um, Jen?
So, some things that we can do to decrease traffic are to improve broadband, so that, uh, infrastructure allows for more telecommuting. We can, as Elise mentioned, uh, incentivize jobs in where, closer to where you work. That was something that, um, was very high priority on the, uh, the Roaring Fork Housing Coalition Housing Study that was completed in 2018. More people wanted shorter commutes, and they wanted to, they wanted to work closer to their homes. It wasn't necessarily that they wanted to live closer to their work, but they wanted their work closer to them. So, not everybody wanted to live in Aspen. A lot of people wanted to stay where they live. And so, how we can, um, have more jobs in our areas are through zoning, um, so looking as we are with the master plan, um, but also looking at our, our, our building codes and the zoning, is where, where can we attract, uh, more businesses? Another thing that we can do to decrease, uh, vehicle, vehicular traffic is to improve our walking paths. We've done a great job in the last four years with the South Side Highway 82 underpass. And we can, um, revitalize the downtown walking sphere, the old-town walking sphere of, um, the, um, crosswalks, the sidewalks that are there, and make them a little more user-friendly. And as well, uh, I, I'm not opposed to a circulator bus. I think that the main point for it is looking at it for our seniors as well. So, it's multi-generational of autonomy for younger children and older adults. And, uh, partnering with Rafta, uh, they are a phenomenal organization, and I would love to see what we can accomplish with them, like Carbondale has their circulator in Snowmass Village.
Okay. Dieter?
I think, um, with regards to the circulator, I, I think it would be a community, the be- the benefit, by and large, would be moving people around, but if you wanted to, if you wanted to go to the library and then to the art center, it connects those two, you know, if I have a, you know, my daughter's going to drive probably in 10 years, or 20, if I'm lucky. But, you know, it allows, it allows that kind of connection to the community, which I think is, is one of the things that we're lacking. And then with regards to, uh, traffic, that's, you know, that's, that's a really tough question. You know, most of the traffic, you know, while I, while I want to say more, more jobs here in the community will certainly help that, while I want to say, you know, employers being more thoughtful about, do they really need that employee to come up and, and sit in an office there, two, two extra days a week, or whatever it is? So, incentives in that way. But, you know, it's a large, you know, there's a large, what is the, I, I read something that said that construction was the number-one industry here, and, and we all know what direction that goes. It's going to be hard to curtail that. So, I feel, um, you know, to some extent, I mean, if we're going to dream big dreams, then maybe the master plan should include a rail system or something that, that, you know, connects the entire valley, and hopefully we see something that way. Of course, I know that is a big dream, and probably not reality, but why not, right?
Keep dreaming, I'll live the dream with you.
All right, uh, Jen, we're going to start with you on this one.
May I comment on the connector?
Please?
You changed the question on me, so I was the only one that didn't get anything.
Okay, well, go ahead. I mean, I was hoping you would sort of segue into it yourself, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, my mistake then. I'm in support of the connector, too, and the one little thing that I just wanted to comment on that, that I didn't hear anybody explicitly state, was that I think it would be good for economy and creating that sense of community between those two barbell ends, to have that connection. You know, you're at Holly Ann, and you're shopping for an outfit, and you mentioned that you need shoes, and they said, "Oh, well, there's a great shoe store in Old Town, you can hop on the connector and get you right there."
Great. Okay. So, Jen? Well, on paper, this job is a few hours every o- other week. That's yes. This is why we're going to start with you. This is not, you know, how much time do you have for this job? Would there be any conflicts with work? And, and where's this lie under priority scale when it comes with family and work and things like that? Jen, tell us a little about the job and, and how much work it really is.
So, you can work as hard as you want at this, and you can put as much time in, just as you are choosing to invest your time to be here and witness us talking. Thank you so much for being here. It's the same thing of, um, being on town council, there are committees, there are meetings, and you're going to be there, and there's going to be a lot of paid staff and other paid, um, representatives from, from other places. We do get a stipend, um, but it's not a, it's not a full-time job stipend or benefits. And so, um, it's important to, to find that balance. One item that the, that we have from a, a governance standpoint changed is there is less town council members committed to certain committees. So, the committees are a little more independent now, so, um, there are less meetings that I'm going to. I'm not going to the finance committee and the, um, the postcommittee and the Basalt Affordable Housing Committee. Um, so, we have reduced that amount of time, and it's been a really large, um, um, lessening on, on the amount of time required. How I manage the balance is Tuesdays, I don't, every other Tuesday, I don't take meetings, um, at, at my work. I keep it to the minimum of what I need to do that day. It's also important, um, when the packet comes out on a Thursday, to think about the weekend ahead and put time aside, because no one loves a counselor that doesn't read their packet. That's the mortal sin, and you can tell, because you'll be scrolling through your screen, trying to read it during the meeting. Bad. And then, there's so many awesome ways to be involved, and that's something that I really appreciate is, is the excitement behind it of, you get so much back from going to these meetings, and you're giving to our community. So, that's, that's how I balance it. And I will say, as being a, a young professional, what you say to the microphone on TV and is written in the paper can affect your personal life and your professional life. And that's something to be very aware of. And, um, the one advice that I can put out there is, anything that you write, anything that you say, expect it to be published, to your friends, to your, um, your coworkers, your, everything. It's, y- y- your life changes, and I'd say in a very positive way. It's an incredible way to live, and I'm so grateful for the experience.
Okay. Tiffany, you ready for it?
I am ready for it. There isn't one thing that I've, um, done in my life where I haven't given my all, and, and I, and I mean that. Whatever I'm doing, I'm giving all of it, all of, all of myself, whether that's, um, with my children, with my husband, um, who is an amazing partner, who, um, supports me in this dream, and all my dreams, he tells me to go for it, and we'll make it work, and we do. And I think, um, that is a huge help, especially with two kids, and, um, me having a part-time job and teaching yoga, and, you know, the number of things that, that take place. So, like Jen said, you know, you can put as much effort into it as you want, but I think that if you're not going to put effort into it, the community will see that. And, um, I will say that that's not what I'm about, is that, you know, I will be putting in a lot of effort.
Great. David?
Yeah, so, I mean, like everybody else, I want to put as much as I can into this. I, I think it, I, I've had a lot of fun campaigning. I've never really campaigned for anything before, and I, and I'm enjoying that process. I, I, I think it would be amazing and a privilege and a lot of fun to be on the council. I'm, I'm fortunate enough to be a teleworker myself, so I work out at my house in Elkhorn. Uh, I used to be a total road warrior, and ironically, I'm on the road right now, but I'm at home now most of the time. So, that was part of the driver for me, me wanting to, to do this, is I'm home, I want to do something in the town, meet people, make an impact, um, you know, and I, as far as prioritizing competing, or managing compet- uh, competing priorities, rather, I, I'm a, some a people manager now, and that's something I always tell my folks, is everybody's stressed, everybody has a lot going on. I think you have to look at all of these priorities, family, your work, things like this, if you're coaching a sports team, at different times, different things are going to be, um, take precedent. But it can't be the same thing all the time, and conversely, it can't be the same thing all the time, it's the lowest priority. So, I, that's kind of how I approach prioritization, and how I would approach this, right? I'd be there for everything that I could possibly do for the town, and, um, when, when I need to, but obviously, we have families and jobs, the part-time job, totally get that, too.
All right. Glenn?
So, currently, I serve on the postcommittee. We meet, uh, every two, two Wednesdays a month, so it's basically the same commitment. Uh, we got the packets, we got a review, there's tons of material, probably average about 10 hours a week on it. Thankfully, my wife is very, very supportive of me doing this, and thankfully, I have an employer that lets me take the time off and is understanding of it, because they're supportive of it as well, but, uh, I understand 100% what it's going to take, and I volunteer and do it right now, pretty much, so.
All right. Elise?
You referenced, uh, my dream to be a pastry chef.
Yes.
That dream took me to France, and then after that, to India, to get my yoga certification. So, my friends tease me that I have this gypsy spirit, and it seeks out fun things to do, challenges and, um, adventures. So, um, now that I am sort of grounded in Basalt, I am seeking my next adventure through representing the town as a council member, and in terms of the actual technical logistics of it, I currently work Monday through Thursday, um, unless there is some overwhelming need to work extra hours. So, that would give me a nice Friday day to review a council packet. So, I think, you know, I'm excited for this opportunity.
Okay. And Dieter?
I um, I would, I would embrace and the opportunity to serve the people of Basalt, and um as far as logistics go, uh, I mean, i- i- if you're passionate about, what you're passionate about is you make time for. And, and that's the way it's, you know, that's essentially how I prior- prioritize my time, if it's, if it's something, uh, you know, if the people of this town, uh, you know, pointed to me and asked me to represent them, um, that would be something I would take seriously and put the, the necessary time into, you know, bringing their voice to a council table.
Okay, all right, we're gonna wrap up with elevator pitches, real quick, we're gonna start, we're just gonna go right down the line here. Dieter, why should we vote for you?
I believe, um, I bring a fresh perspective, and uh, I, you know, I, I think I can, I, I'm good at, I'm good at, I'm good at getting people together, finding solutions, and that is my elevator's pitch.
All right, Jennifer, roll.
I'm your incumbent candidate with immense institutional knowledge, and I will continue working with integrity, my heart, and um all that I've got to it, towards our community sustainability.
All right, Elise?
You should vote for me, because I will represent you, I will listen to what you have to say, and I will find means to um hear those voices that are not currently being heard, if we can do it through technology, or if we have to do meetings, or, you know, if you stop me in the grocery store, but only as long as that is allowed by the Colorado Sunshine laws. And uh, you know, I do have some institutional lo- knowledge in sustainability, having worked for city government before. Um, I worked in IT for eight years, so I have background in project management, so I'm good at organizing and details, and all that kind of good logistics stuff. Uh, I spent two years as the Basalt Community Garden Manager, so um I definitely am committed to this community.
All right, Tiffany, lay it on us.
You should votes, vote for me, because I want to be your voice. I want to be a voice for the community, I want to let you know that I am here for you to listen to you, even if we don't share the same perspective. I will stand for what is honest and what is true, and I will work really, really hard at um, at helping this community thrive.
Glenn?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up, you guys for putting this on, you should vote for me, because I have the knowledge, the experience, I understand how government works, I'm an honest individual, I'm not always gonna tell you what you want to hear, but I'm gonna tell you the truth, and I always live in reality. So I'm not gonna BS ya over me.
Okay, and David?
Thanks, Todd, and Madeline, and Steve, and everybody from the Roaring Fork Weekly Journal, and the, everybody for showing up, I can't really see anymore, because it's getting a little dark in the room and everything, but um thank you for being there. I, I'm super passionate about local politics, I, and the town of, obviously, I love Basalt, we put down roots there, this is our home, so I, I want to see the best for it. I have a lot of skills to bring to bear from my professional life, and program and project management, and business, and leadership, and I think I can make a really positive impact for the community, and I, I hope you guys will give me the chance, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we got a couple minutes, do you have any questions? Parking? Who wants to field that one?
Which area?
We need some.
Are you, in, in Old Town? Yeah? What can we do about the parking situation in Old Town? Glenn, go ahead.
So there's currently three plans that are presented in the master plan. It, one of them does a way of doing away with the loading zone, dedicated handicap spots, uh, there's a lot to be done there. Ultimately, the best thing is figure out how to get the Clark's Market parcel developed. That's gonna take getting all those HOAs to work together, put in a downtown parking garage.
Anyone, any other thoughts on parking?
I think we need to incentivize the employees to park elsewhere, so that those spots are free for folks that are coming to do business.
Okay.
I'm there with Elise, and, and it's actually incentivizing the business owners and the building owners um to um, and have their subsidized bus passes, like SkiCo does, like the town of Basalt does, et cetera. We, again, it's like affordable housing, we cannot build ourselves out of the issue, the problem. We have only so much square feet, um, underground parking is very expensive, just as an example, the Basalt River Park, when we were looking at underground parking there, AKA underwater parking, that was to the tune of fifty thousand dollars per parking place. So um it's, it's reducing our reliance on um vehicles and expecting to be able to park in front of places, and leaving it up to the business owners and the um employees to...
Okay, Tiffany, did you wanna?
I did, I was going to say, if that circulator ever comes into fruition, that will help the parking situation tremendously.
Okay, Dieter?
I think, you know, anything an immediate fix um would be, would be to look at the loading zones, um, and creating parking spots out of those, and plus, I mean, the, the Clark's parcel may not get developed anytime soon, however, there's parking spaces around there to build, you know, maybe a, a walking paths that could kind of direct people into, you know, the spaces that are behind, or actually, I guess, in the front of that building into the uh roadside, I mean, there, there are some parking spots there, but, you know, in addition to that is, you know, maybe explain to the owners that they would get more business if their parking wasn't taken up by their employees.
Sure, and David, did you have anything you wanted to add, or?
Yeah, the employee, the employee parking, the, the uh connector could be an option. In the summer, I think we could use more recycle, I know sometimes I, I find it oversubscribed, and there's no bikes when you show up somewhere. That's a great way to kind of do point-to-point around town, and not take a car.
Okay, um, I actually had a question that wasn't on here. Recycling, we're losing the, well, we lost the recycling center. Is there anything that can be done that you guys know of? Jen, you're smiling. You, because I, I know you realize what a horrible situation it is.
I do, and, and you read, um, maybe you read um what I stated in the Aspen Times, um, which is the truth, that there is curbside recycling. And again, it's, it's a little bit of self-reliance, and taking up that responsibility with yourself. Also recognizing that there is still free recycling, and you can go to the landfills um in Pitkin County, in Garfield County, and bring your recycling there. As well as the town is still investing money, um, there will be electronic, e-waste, there's gonna be paint, and there will be general recycling events, so that will continue. And then, again, um, be conscious of what you are buying, and um consider composting. Recycling is very important, um, but composting can make an even greater impact, and we are so amazing to live in a community where there is curbside composting, so please check that out.
Okay, anyone want to add to that?
My understanding is that the Pitkin County landfill only has about a year and a half left before it's full, so I do think that we need to figure out ways to divert from the garbage sources, but the thing about the recycling center is that it's only used by the people who take the initiative to go there. So again, this is one of those situations where, you know, people need to do, they, they need to want to do it.
True. Tiffany?
Um, I'm just gonna go off of Jen's point and say that um it is a little bit of self-reliance. We compost at our house, um, we take care of our own recycling, we nev- we've, I'd never relied on that recycling center um before, so um, and like Elise said, if the landfill's gonna be full in a year and a half, we do need to figure, figure out um better ways, and composting does produce way better results than, you know, throwing your cardboard out there, because that cardboard can be composted.
Sure.
And I'm just gonna add that I've used that compost in my garden, from the Pitkin County landfill, and it's great, yeah.
Okay, um, I imagine, Matt, we gotta wrap up? Yeah, okay, all right, well, I'd like to thank you all so much, and, and just a reminder that uh Monday, March second, from six to eight PM, the Roaring Fork Weekly Journal will be a co-sponsor of the Basalt Chamber's twenty-twenty Candidate Forum at the Basalt Library, which will feature our lovely six panelists here, and the three candidates for mayor, so please uh make sure to check that out, and thank you all so much for coming to attend, and thank you guys so much for running and for taking the time to, to sit down with us, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.